Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
The time is now 9:45 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of October 9, 2012 is hereby called to order. The first item is the approval of agenda and order priority. I have a motion, please.
It's a move.
Moved by John.
It's by Eileen.
Any additions, deletions, comments? Call it favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. Marilyn, Mertz, please.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce you to the people around the State Board of Education table. Starting on my left is Mike Flanagan, State Superintendent, and he's Chairman of the Board. To his left is John Austin. He's the President of the Board and he resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Albridge is the Board's Vice President from Rochester Hills. To her left is Nancy Danhoff, who will join us via telephone for part of the meeting. And then Kathleen Strauss is from Detroit. And then the Teacher of the Year for this year is Bobby Joe Kenyon. She teaches at Ottawa Hills Public Schools, or Ottawa Hills High School in Grand Rapids. And across the table is Greg Tetter. He's the Governor's Representative. Eileen Weiser is from Ann Arbor. Dan Varner is from Detroit. Richard Zilee is from Dearborn. He's the NASB delegate, National Association for State Boards of Education, the Boards Association. And next to me is Mary Ann Yarick-Gwier. She's the Board's Treasurer from Detroit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mertz. Just a couple of quick items before we start. One, first of all, congratulations, John, Director of Michigan Economic Center from the Civitas Foundation. That's really good news for you, but good news for us and good news for the state, I think you'll do.
I was pleased I was appointed by myself.
Well, it was... Regardless, it's really, I think, an important mission and we're looking forward to kind of the link. We think it's good for us.
It's all about pushing the needed agenda.
Cool. And then a few of you have asked since, I mentioned to the Board that I got invited to NBC Education Nation. A few of you have asked, because it got, I wouldn't say it went viral like in the sense that it went out a little bit, this particular little piece, so I thought we'd show just a quick version of it, not the whole thing. One minute.
Governor, first of all, thanks for being here. Brian Williams asked who's responsible for the kids at Denby High School in Detroit. I am. I'm the State Superintendent of Schools in Michigan, and I need to tell you that my personal shame frankly is that we have not been able to make this a better place for kids who are in poverty. That's rural poverty and it's urban poverty.
That's kind of just an anticipatory set for our first item today, which is on Head Start and Early Childhood. And it was somewhat of a coincidence that the night before I had been put at the table with Brian Williams, and there was a dinner. And then, so I think he knew my role here and then happened to bring up Denby High School in the morning. And at any rate, it just seemed like the question kept coming up, who's responsible, who's responsible? I'm kind of thinking, I guess I am ultimately. And I think one of the things that we were trying to get at, and I hope we'll see more about today, is we can't get kids college and career ready if we don't have them kindergarten ready. It's just like we were behind before we even started. And this Board has been just great in understanding that issue. There can be differences on how they get kindergarten ready and what's appropriate for early childhood, but the idea that, think about this, when I was a local superintendent 20 years ago, we didn't think this way. We kind of knew it intellectually, but we didn't think about the development of the brain and how far behind kids were and how many fewer words they knew before they even got to kindergarten if they were in rural and urban poverty in particular. And this can happen. I was a so-called suburban superintendent, but I had 35 schools. I had at least eight that would be considered urban in a different, if they had been segmented differently. And found the same kind of issues which were kids in poverty. It's just a hard thing for teachers to catch up on and then be responsible for. So it's one reason I thank our team and the Board for being supportive of growth as an issue for accountability, certainly not raw test scores. And on that count, I thought I'd just mention in passing that we had a meeting earlier this morning and I, we'll have more time to kind of probably interact on this, but I thought it's, how can I say? I want to say it's disappointing. I understand the media's role and others in FOIA issues, but as State Superintendent, I'm really against the idea that individual teacher names be released related to educator effectiveness. And I, it's not directly in our bailiwick, but I'm hoping that that can be avoided, especially in this infancy here, when we really don't have perfected instruments for student growth yet. And I think that that information with individual teachers could be, even with no malice, misused in a way that's not the intent of the legislation or anything else. So there'll be more to see on this, but I thought, I was a little alarmed this morning when I heard the intensity of some of the FOIAs that are around that issue and hope we can come together on saying it's just not good for our teachers or our kids at this point to release individual names, especially in the infancy of kind of this educator evaluation legislation.
Well, the system hasn't been perfected.
Exactly. Yeah. So there'll be more to come. I mean, I'm not sure how much that's building up, but our hope is there. We'll report more out as this develops.
Are you ready to debate Mitt Romney next time? Looks like you had him on your heels there.
No, no. I, I, no, I, but I do think it was good that, I think both candidates have kind of addressed this in their own way and, but no, I'm not going to get into that. That's your, that's your job, from what I hear, so you can get, you do that. Our first item today, the, I kind of probably should have done this in reverse, the FOIA first and then, and then the little intro on Head Start and on Early Childhood. And if I can ask our team to come to the table, Deputy Superintendent Susan Broman, Jeremy Reuter, who's Director of Head Start, and Lisa Brewer-Wallhaven, who's the Director of Child Development and Care. Jeremy and Lisa, this, I'm not sure, but I think this may be the first time the Board has met them, and Susan will introduce them more formally in just a moment. These are folks that have joined our team after the Governor, through executive order, created Great Start within the Department here, the Office of Great Start, which I think is a big, it's so logical that we are now expanding our brackets, and I think it helps us once and for all transcend the mindset that the Department of Ed is K-12. We're not. We actually have never been K-12. If you look at our nutrition programs, if you look at our work in the libraries, but it's kind of an image, and I'll just say this, I don't know if you've run into this as Board members, but I've occasionally run into things such as, well, we get the early childhood issue, but why would you support funding there and not in K-12? Or we support funding, in my view, of all of the above. And our role is also beyond K-12. So this is, this is really an opportunity to show off a little bit of what Susan is already building together with her team, and then at the same time to make a statement that, you know, if you haven't figured this out, folks that might be listening in, that we've always transcended K-12, but even more formally now with this reorganization. And so Susan, Deputy Superintendent Susan Broman and her team.
Thank you, Superintendent Flanagan. It's a great day for Michigan's children to be able to talk about the Office of Great Start. I'm not going to bore you with my spin on why the Office of Great Start was important and why it needed to be created within the Michigan Department of Education. However, I will show you a video that I shamelessly stole from the first five-hunt that really talks about the importance of early childhood in an incredible way. So let's look at the video first. And pray for technology.
Nothing shameless about that. That's a very clear picture.
Yeah, it paints the picture. That's the why. And now we're going to move into the how of implementing the Office of Great Start within the Michigan Department of Education. The chart on the screen shows how the Office of Great Start was configured by the executive order. And what it did is consolidate three offices within the Michigan Department of Education and the Office of Great Start. One of the offices you have had a lot of familiarity with, the Office of Early Childhood, Education and Family Services, which has been in MDE for a long time. So you're familiar with the work of that office and the services that are contained within that office. What was new when the executive order was created was moving the Head Start State Collaboration Office from the Department of Human Services and the Office of Child Development and Care from the Department of Human Services to the Michigan Department of Education Office of Great Start. That's a significant move in consolidating the services that are really all part and parcel of early learning environments for young children. And so by consolidating these three offices, we are able to, number one, look at administrative efficiencies as well as establish quality across all three settings. The other part of the executive order were outcomes. And the four outcomes for the office are children are born healthy, children healthy, thriving and developmentally on track from birth to third grade, and children developmentally ready to succeed in school at the time of school entry, and children prepared to succeed in fourth grade and beyond by reading proficiency by the end of third grade. Those are what I call incredible outcomes that we, as a state, are going to be striving to achieve. Now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jeremy Reuter and Lisa Brewer-Wallhaven to dive a lot deeper into the work of Head Start as well as the Office of Child Care and Development.
Good morning. Wanted to jump in with kind of building off the video as well as the Office of Great Start outcomes and Superintendent Flanagan's comments about 20 years ago in relation to understanding that early childhood is important, but we don't always necessarily have the investments that are there. About 11 years ago, there was a release of a book, Neurons to Neighborhoods, which I remember when it came out, there was a lot of publicity around it. The awareness around 90% of the child's brain being developed by age five was receiving a lot of media attention. I remember sitting back thinking, great, this is out there. This is going to register and things are going to start happening. And so 11 years later, 10 years later, the Office of Great Start, through executive orders, started to bring together some of the pieces that will help to move towards these outcomes for early childhood, transcend K-12, which of course the Department has always had an early childhood office focused in this area. But now we have books such as Investing in Kids, which was written by Tim Bartek here in Michigan, that talks about how to coordinate across early childhood systems in an efficient way so that we're putting funds into early childhood to support school readiness at time of kindergarten entry. And so to be able to sit here today and talk about Head Start and childcare and how that fits into the early childhood programs at the Department of Education and transcend into other areas is exciting to talk about. First piece that we wanted to do is to use the Great Start RANIS program really as a reference point. As Susan mentioned, the Early Childhood Education and Family Service Office has been here for a number of years, and the Great Start RANIS program is the state-funded pre-K program in Michigan that has been operating for over 20 years. Served in program year of 2011, 2012, there were about 30,000 slots available for three-hour part-day preschool program for children 100% to 300% of poverty with very rigorous implementation for those children in poverty as well as additional risk factors. The program is structured through early childhood standards of quality that focus on how to prepare children for kindergarten entry, and there's an implementation manual that goes out to the field to ensure that the program is implemented properly. The Great Start RANIS program is required to be licensed, and I mentioned that as we talk about childcare later in the presentation, it's part of all of these pieces coming together in a system. And Great Start Quality is our quality rating improvement system here in Michigan, which Lisa will spend more time talking about later. A few months back, Lindy Bush was able to present on the evaluation findings from the Great Start RANIS program and the impact that that has for school readiness and long-term. The beauty of it is we have longitudinal outcomes now that shows that we are making progress with the children in GSRP and that it relates to specifically the achievement gap for African-American males. So jumping into Head Start and Early Head Start, wanted to give a basic overview of what Head Start and Early Head Start is. And it's important to note that Head Start and Early Head Start is a federal to local funded program. So funds come from Washington DC to their regional office in Chicago and then to 41 agencies in the state of Michigan to provide the service to low-income families in Michigan. Early Head Start serves pregnant women through age three, and Head Start provides a preschool opportunity for children age three through age five. And the focus is on enhancing their cognitive, social and emotional development. Program was originated in 1965 as a poverty reduction program. The focus on research was if we start early, prepare kids for kindergarten entry and success beyond, that this will have longitudinal outcomes of reducing poverty as a whole across the country. Head Start and Early Head Start were reauthorized in 2007, so just over five years ago, with a focus on improving staff qualifications, leading to better child outcomes. The document that was designed after 2007 was called a Roadmap to Excellence. And the focus in the Roadmap to Excellence was looking at Head Start at that point, a 42-year history, how do we build on a program that's been successful thus far to have greater outcomes for kids? In there, as I mentioned, they increased staff qualifications for implementation of the program, but also called for a more rigorous evaluation of the program. So those grantees, as we refer to them, that may not be meeting the expectations of children, those grants would go up for public bid and be an opportunity for increased efficiency with implementation of the program. In addition to the look at re-competition, which I'll talk more about later, there was a focus on coordination of Head Start and Early Head Start with other early childhood systems components. So early on, here in Michigan, pre-K, childcare, as Head Start alone is not going to tackle providing a high-quality preschool opportunity for children living in poverty. A key component of Head Start are comprehensive services. Most people recognize Head Start, and I can't tell you how many phone calls I get on a monthly basis from individuals wanting to start a Head Start program. The awareness is that it is a preschool program designed for children living in poverty, 100% of poverty. What usually is not aware for the Head Start program are the comprehensive service provisions that are available for these children. So to give you a financial comparison and contrast between GSRP, GSRP is funded about $3,400 per child. Head Start, on average, in the state of Michigan, is funded about $6,700. And the difference between the funding is not only the implementation of the preschool program, but the comprehensive service provision, which includes health, nutrition and social services. And as part of that, that's a very broad umbrella, it's a focus on providing individual services to families, ensuring that families, again, living at 100% of poverty are accessing the services in which they're eligible for through the state of Michigan or within their local service areas. Providing family education, focusing on helping the family to move towards sustainability outside of poverty and through child health. So ensuring that each child has a medical home, a dental home, that they're up to date on their immunizations, their developmental screenings for vision, hearing, nutrition, and that there's health education, and a focus on educating the parent to be, as we know, parents are their first teacher. So how do we support parents and the child moving through the program? Give you a quick example in terms of the difference in the comprehensive service and the cost, it's ensuring that each child has access to service. For example, a child that may have extreme oral health needs may not be able to have all of their health service needs covered by insurance, in which case Head Start oftentimes will supplement the cost to ensure that the child is receiving the services in which they need in order to be successful. For eligibility for Head Start, children have to be living at 100% of poverty or below. And to give you an example of what that looks like, for a family of four, that's $22,350 annually to live on. An example of a grantee here in the Lansing area, 50% of their enrollment are children living at 50% of poverty. So families, a family of four, living on $11,000 each year. 10% of the enrollment in Head Start must be children that have an IEP, so an Individual Education Plan, and requires that Head Start works in coordination with their local school districts and ISDs to ensure that those children are identified and receiving the additional services in which they're eligible for. Additional categorical eligibility...
I have a question. What are the ages of these children that have the IEPs?
So the children with IEPs are children age three to five.
And what's the criteria for qualifying for an IEP at that level?
I wouldn't be the, probably the best person to answer the question on what would identify them for an IEP. Head Start is responsible for making the referral to the local district and to the ISD, and from there, on a developmental scale, will identify whether or not they're meeting the expectations for their age and the identification of additional services that may need to catch them up in preparation.
It's been a while since, it's been a few years since I've administered a school, but general criteria in Detroit public schools for many years was two years behind a grade level, and we're, there's not a grade level here. So I suppose you'd identify physical disabilities which would qualify for an IEP without that, but...
Physical, social, emotional, health. I know there's a few fingers pointing over to Lindy.
Lindy and Sally will pass this.
And Sally.
And Richard, you're right. Usually at that age, they're going to be readily identified disabilities, so they would tend to be more of the physical. So there's a lot of times you're not going to be able to tell necessarily with a child that young if there's anything, sometimes you can tell if there's cognitive, but sometimes the emotional, you can't tell. So it tends to be the ones that are more physically and that you can see.
And the 10% is required by law, so we must identify 10% of children.
It is required by federal legislation that these grantees identify 10% of their enrollment have IEPs, correct?
The special education rules do go through what will qualify a child who's three to five for special education. The two years behind was for specific learning disabilities, and that's been updated too for older kids. For younger kids, kind of a rule of thumb, it has been about 50% of the expected development for that age would qualify you for special education, but there are more specific indicators in each of the domains. So, and there are assessments that can be used to determine if a child is far enough behind that they would qualify, or if they have a condition that is going to lead to a special education need, even, you know, something like Down Syndrome or something like that. And in Michigan, we do identify children for special education at birth if they have those kinds of pretty, you know...
Thank you, Sally and Lindy. So additional categorical eligibility for both Head Start and Early Head Start, children and families that are receiving Social Security income, are receiving TANF assistance, they're part of foster care, or they're identified as homeless under the McKinney-Vento Education Act. Those children are categorically eligible regardless of their income. Oftentimes, the children that are enrolled are both living in poverty as well as receiving these forms of assistance or potentially experiencing homelessness or identified as having disabilities. Give you an overview of Head Start here in Michigan, Head Start and Early Head Start. The funded enrollment in Michigan is for 38,418 children annually. To break that down, children age three to age five, about 32,000 of those children are participating in Head Start. And for Early Head Start is about 4,400 children. So there's a variation in the number, obviously, that does not add up to 38,418. And the difference there are children that turn over throughout the course of the year. Families living in poverty, often transient, move from one area to another, and so children may be enrolled in the beginning of the year. Head Start is required within 45 days when a child leaves the program to re-enroll a child so that they're fully enrolled throughout the course of the program year. Head Start is a three-and-a-half-day preschool program. Predominantly in Michigan, we do see that it is implemented as a three-and-a-half-hour program, but many communities will try to expand to a full-day, if they can, full-year program. And that requires identifying in their community there are no additional resources in which they can utilize to expand on the three-and-a-half-hour program, in which case they are allowed to use their funds to create what's considered a full-day program. And GSRP would be a full academic day. For Head Start is a full working day. Oftentimes, what we'll see is Head Start partnering with GSRP to blend and braid those funds to create a full-day option. And one piece that we'll get to further in the presentation is how can we utilize childcare funds to expand upon the preschool opportunities that are available here in Michigan to fully make full-day, full-year options available for families who are particularly living in poverty. Annual funding for Michigan is $252 million. 220 of that is for Head Start, the other 32 million is for Early Head Start. Head Start is monitored and implemented utilizing program standards, which is 1,800 performance standards, and I've seen a print copy of this. It takes up a large amount of space, and what I've, I've learned from directors who have been implementing Head Start for 40-some years is that they still learn how to better implement some of these performance standards as research comes out on an annual basis. There's a Child Outcomes Framework, which in comparison to what we have in Michigan are early childhood standards of quality, these two documents are aligned to ensure that both Head Start and GSRP are implementing high-quality standards across both programs. Our early childhood standards of quality are under revision currently because our Child Outcomes Framework from Head Start was updated two years ago and to ensure that we have alignment across both of those programs. It's also the foundation of our quality rating improvement system, which Lisa will talk more about. So I mentioned earlier that Head Start being a federal to local program, those funds go to 41 agencies here in Michigan. And to give you a sense of those who are implementing the programs, majority of them are community action agencies. In the last 10 years, we've seen more grants, when they've been up for competition, go to intermediate school districts, and we do have a few faith-based organizations that implement this. To give you an example, in northeast Michigan, one of our grantees implements Head Start and Early Head Start in 21 counties. And so in order to be able to facilitate that across such a vast service area, they not only have their own facilities... not only have their own facilities, but oftentimes they're partnering with GSRP, or they may be partnering with a child care provider who's providing the care portion while Head Start's providing the comprehensive services. So, there is a vast array of how this program is administered in the state. Head Start is available in all 83 counties. Early Head Start is available in 75 of our counties. And if you do a comparison and contrast between the numbers that I shared earlier, 32,000 children for Head Start, just over 4,000 for Early Head Start, we are not heavily invested in, even in Head Start, in children zero to three. Just to give you a quick overview of the infrastructure of Head Start, I've mentioned already, it's a federal-to-local program, so this is operated out of Washington, DC. Funding goes into 12 regions across the state, or across the country. Michigan is in Region 5, which is operated out of Chicago. So, funds go to Washington, DC, to Chicago, and then to those 41 agencies, which is the role of the Head Start Collaboration Office. The office in which I operate is the single entity at the state level funded by the Office of Head Start. And the focus behind the Head Start Collaboration Office is to ensure that Head Start is a part of state building, state early childhood systems building, as well as policy. So, I end up being the liaison in policy recommendations, not only for education, but human services and health, to ensure that families that are participating in Head Start or eligible for Head Start are accessing the services in which they are, they're eligible for. We also have a Head Start Training and Technical Assistance System that is operated out of the regional office. That is the arm of, the Office of Head Start is in place in order to provide the supports for these 41 agencies in Michigan and across the country to ensure that they're meeting the benchmarks in which they're being held accountable for, most notably, school readiness and preparation for kindergarten entry.
A little bit of a shift to start talking about the Child Development and Care Program. Jeremy's been using the word preschool a lot, but he's also been using the word childcare. And really, these programs are all structured and built so that they can work together and support each other to really create and meet the needs of the families who are receiving these services and benefits. 64% of children who are under the age of six and are living in Michigan are in the care of someone other than a family member on a regular basis. So, as you think about that number, it's why you're going to start to realize how important childcare is to the puzzle in terms of helping to ensure that children are ready to be successful in school when they arrive. The Child Development and Care Program was started in the late '90s. It was designed as a work-support assistance at that time. The goal of this program is to ensure that children have access to high-quality care settings, and I would say, over the last three to five years, the Office of Child Care, which is part of the Health and Human Services at the federal level, has really shifted their emphasis for this program. So, while they're still having us ensure that we are supporting working families, their primary focus and emphasis is now really on quality early learning settings, and ensuring that whatever setting a child is in prior to entering school, that it's of the highest quality. So, we're really starting to see that shift and that connection. The funding for this program is primarily federal funding, however, we do also receive state general fund dollars, and it's really for two primary focuses. One of those focuses is to help families with the cost of their childcare when they are not able to be with their child, and that, again, really provides opportunities to help connect between some of the half-day programs that you've heard Jeremy talking about, to ensure that children have full-year, full-time opportunities in quality settings. The other portion of the funding that comes for this program really is to be focused on improving the quality of all early learning settings. Who do we serve? 65% of the families who receive this assistance for childcare are income-eligible at 127% of the federal poverty level. So, again, low-income families. 70% of those families are employed, so these are low-income working families. Jeremy gave you the poverty-level figure for the Head Start programs. At 127% of federal poverty, they're at about $28,000 a year for a family of four, so not that dramatic of an increase in regards to income. During fiscal year 12, so last year, we had 27,702 cases. So, that means that that number of families were receiving assistance with childcare costs over that fiscal year. That is for 50,175 children, so most of those cases, the families have two children, who are also getting this support. This slide shows you a little bit of our funding history for childcare. Hopefully, this slide gives you a very good visual of what this program has been experiencing over the last several years. You can see that at our highest peak, we were around $500 million to help support families with their childcare needs. Last year, we were down to $159 million to help support families with their childcare needs. The funding for this program is determined a little bit differently than the funding that Jeremy was describing for the other preschool programs. It's determined by caseload. So, the fiscal entities, the state budget office, the legislature, look at our caseload numbers, and based on those caseload numbers, determine the funding for this program. It also, at times, is funded through legislative policy decisions. So, we have been directed to, for example, reduce the number of hours that we're supporting families for their childcare needs. We have been asked to reduce the rates that are paid to providers to help support those childcare needs. So, when the funding is drastically reducing, like you can see, it definitely provides challenges to us as we're working to support children in quality early learning settings and connecting them to other early learning opportunities that exist. To expand a little bit about childcare here in Michigan, our federal regulations for this program do require that we offer parents a choice. And what that means is we have to ensure that the childcare choices that are available to them meet a variety of needs. So, in Michigan, we really have four choices for parents to meet their childcare needs. Three of those fall into a category of licensed and registered providers, and there are a little bit over 11,000 licensed providers in Michigan. The caveat that I'd like to say about that group is not all of them care for child development and care subsidy children. Some of them will not accept those children because of the reimbursement rate that we are able to help provide for those families. Those licensed and registered programs are really housed in a variety of locations. They could be in a community building, they might be in a school building, they could be in a private building or a location, sometimes they're in church locations. They're all privately-owned businesses that are being operated and are spread out all across the state. The other group of providers are unlicensed providers. They're generally families, friends, neighbors, somebody that the family knows. Currently, we have about 12,000 unlicensed providers who are caring for subsidy children. So, the unlicensed providers can only care for subsidy children. They're not able to care for a mixture of children. What is really unique about all four of these choices that parents have is that generally, these providers provide care for the family from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And I say that generally because that's not always the case. There are also providers who do overnight care, who provide care on alternate shifts, who provide care on the weekends. So, they're really there at a variety of times to support the family in regards to what their needs are. This graphic shows you where, really, again, children are by those various care settings that I was just describing. Over time and through history, Michigan has had a higher proportion of our children in unlicensed care than in other states. However, due to several changes within our program to improve the quality of care, our move to the Office of Great Start to better coordinate across all programs, I am happy to say that we are beginning to see a shift in that historic data. So, to give you an example, in 2005, 35% of the children who are receiving the subsidy were in the care of a licensed provider. During fiscal year 12, 62% of the children who are receiving subsidy are now in the care of a licensed or registered provider. And that really does get attributed to the quality changes that we have been able to make in regards to our coordination with other programs. Unlicensed providers are now required to engage in a pre-enrollment criminal history check. We also do criminal history checks on the adult household members in those settings, and they are attending a health and safety orientation prior to being able to provide care as well. So, that has really made a difference in those care settings for children. So, to shift a little bit now to talk about our quality efforts, we really have two primary activities that we are engaging in through our office to focus on improving and increasing the quality of care in early learning settings. One of those is through the Bureau of Children and Adult Licensing. That is a bureau that is actually located in the Department of Human Services, and we actually purchase these quality activities from them through an agreement that we have with them. We primarily support the licensing consultants who are going around the state to ensure that the centers and the homes that are licensed or registered are meeting all of the requirements, that they're safe, and that they can be monitored and inspected. They also are very focused on looking at the health and safety of those environments, as well as looking at the activities that are being provided for the children. Our other primary focus for quality improvement is through the Early Childhood Investment Corporation, and they have organized 10 Great Start Regional Resource Centers where the majority of this work is done or facilitated through. They are supporting parents who are looking for childcare, so they're helping parents be able to locate childcare providers who meet their needs. They're helping providers through activities to improve the quality of their care, which can include training and one-on-one consultation and support. They're also maintaining a database. That database is called Connect. That database is available to parents 24 hours a day, seven days a week, where they can go to, again, look for childcare programs that meet their needs. They can also find out information there about other preschool programs that are available in their community. We also offer scholarships to providers who would like to earn an associate degree or a bachelor's degree. Those are called TEACH scholarships. We also, through those entities, provide consumer education. So, all of the things that we've been saying here today about the importance of early childhood, helping make sure that everybody in the community is starting to understand how important these early learning experiences are prior to school entry for future success. And they provide training and technical assistance throughout communities as communities are working on these issues and trying to expand access for children and families. Earlier, Jeremy mentioned Great Start to Quality. This is Michigan's major initiative at this point in time, which really is focused on improving care across all settings. Head Start settings, Great Start readiness, preschool settings, and childcare settings. So, it brings everybody together into one set of standards for identifying quality. It's a tiered rating system that really will focus on helping parents identify high-quality experiences for their family. And the best way that I can describe this to you is sort of like the hotel system where you see stars that let you know the rating or the quality of those hotels that you may be thinking about visiting. This will be the same. So, licensed and registered providers will have a star that indicates their level of quality. The five-star will be the highest level of quality. For providers, this is an opportunity for them to have a continuum to improve the quality of care in their early learning setting. I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy to give you a little more information.
And to come back to where we started with talking about Head Start, GSRP, and now childcare, the standards that are the foundation for Great Start to Quality, in which programs will be measured on this five-star scale, are in curriculum, professional development, environment, health and safety, and family engagement. So, the elements that we talked about earlier related back to investing in early childhood that leads to the greatest outcomes for children. And those are based off of the standards, early childhood standards of quality that we have here in Michigan adopted by the board, as well as the Head Start Outcomes Framework. And the focus behind those standards is not only to be able to rate, but to help to create alignment between Head Start, GSRP, childcare programs. We talked about Head Start and GSRP predominantly being half-day programs. When those children leave those settings, they're going into childcare most often. And when they go into those childcare settings, we want to ensure that there's a continuity of care, so that we're helping to prepare those children for school readiness. The other element of Great Start to Quality is that we want to be able to measure outcomes. Both for Head Start and GSRP, there's a monitoring system, there's accountability that goes along with that. For childcare, licensing is the monitoring that's currently in place, and this will allow for not only the opportunity to promote the raising of quality, but an additional way to go out, see the facilities, rate them, provide them a technical assistance that'll help them move closer to being a five-star program that will lead to greater child outcomes. So, I mentioned continuity of care. And in the past year and a half, since the executive order creating the Office of Great Start, I've shared this short story many times. Prior to coming together under one office, Lisa and I and our respective programs were at the Department of Human Services, and I felt as though I spent more time here at the Department of Education than I did at DHS. In that, we were often coming together with the Office of Early Childhood Education, Family Services, or other areas of Department of Education or Department of Human Services, and we'd come together, we'd have a great idea that would lead to greater opportunities for children. We'd go back to our respective departments and go through the chain of approval, and somewhere along the way, the idea would get shot down. And so, an example, a few years back with the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, we wanted to utilize childcare in a more effective way to create full-day, full-year programs. And we're hopeful, under one umbrella here at the Department of Education, that we'll have the opportunity to move forth with some policy changes that will allow us to create more full-day, full-year options utilizing childcare, Head Start, Great Start readiness program, early childhood special education, really looking across all the early childhood settings. And at the federal level, the Department of Health and Human Services and Federal Department of Education have been doing inter-office, interdepartment work now for the last few years. They launched in August of 2010 a formal agreement between the agencies. So, in many ways, we're replicating not only what the federal government is really looking to achieve, but it's allowing us the opportunities to move forward with ideas that we've had here in Michigan for a number of years. here in Michigan for a number of years and have had to work through systems in order to integrate those possibilities.
So hopefully you've seen Jeremy and I sitting here with smiling as we've been talking about this and seeing Lindy smile and see Susan smile, because this provides tremendous opportunities for all children before they're entering school to be successful and to achieve those outcomes that Susan mentioned early on. It's going to give us chances to look at financing strategies, continuity of care, full-day options for children, alignment of program eligibility criteria, and really looking at data across the scope of the programs. Bringing together constituent groups and really talking with them as a group about the importance of this versus individual constituent groups just meeting to talk about the importance of this. Better coordination with other areas within the department, the Child and Adult Care Food Program, Title I, 31A. We could probably go on forever with the list of opportunities, but I think that we want to close with just giving you a couple more ideas around outcomes and evaluation.
So starting the presentation, you had a chance to talk about GSRP and the evaluation results that were shared in the past few months. Wanted to just come back and talk about both Head Start and childcare and the outcomes and evaluations that are related to those. So Head Start and early Head Start. Over 47 years, there are numerous research studies that have been done on the effectiveness of Head Start for school readiness. And conversely, if you were to do a search, you would find that there's a lot of research around by third grade, some of the gains that were measured at kindergarten entry have started to drift off. And there are various theories behind those. So one book that I brought with me today is the Head Start Debate. So this is actually about seven or eight years old. It's actually a compilation of both research and media focus on Head Start and early Head Start, both from a positive and negative standpoint. The standards that are in place for Head Start are very similar to what we see for GSRP, for the implementation of a preschool program, and then, of course, the comprehensive services to ensure that we're focusing on the whole child. The research studies that are out there show that they are better prepared at kindergarten entry. There is a focus on being able to evaluate that better long-term. One downside to Head Start, being a federal to local program notably, is that we don't have access across the board to the longitudinal studies, for example, that we do now have with GSRP. So one focus with Head Start, being here at the Department of Education and a charge to the Head Start Collaboration Office, is to integrate Head Start children into our state data system so that we can focus on those outcomes, not only at a federal level, but here within the state and locally. Head Start and early Head Start, as I mentioned with the Roadmap to Excellence, has redesigned their monitoring system to focus on quality, reaching outcomes. There are seven areas that are considered triggers, that if you're not meeting these seven areas, which included in there is school readiness, the implementation of child outcomes using a class monitoring tool, financial oversight for the program. If you're not meeting these, these grants will go up for recompetition in their service area so that there's opportunities for those to compete for the grants and meet the standards that the Office of Head Start has put in place. In addition to the new monitoring system, as I mentioned, they redesigned their training and technical assistance system to focus very much on school readiness and family engagement to ensure that we're meeting the outcomes expected for these children.
And for the Child Development and Care Program, we are seeing some new pieces that are really being put in place to help identify outcomes related to the increased emphasis on ensuring there is access to high-quality programs. So we have a new reporting requirement this year. Our first report is due in December, where we actually have to report back what activities we've engaged in to improve the quality of childcare and early learning settings across Michigan. We will also, beginning in a year, be required to report how many children are participating in Great Start to Quality, the Tiered Quality Rating Improvement System, and at what star-level program they're in. So connecting that information as well. And we are engaged with the Regional Education Laboratory Programs to do a validation study on Great Start to Quality. We want to ensure that the system and the standards that have been built and put in place for all of our early learning programs really are getting at improving quality and are the right measures as we move forward.
And in closing, just wanted to come back to sort of the excitement behind the Office of Great Start and where we are. Two initiatives that are underway are the development of integrating early childhood data into the data system. I mentioned Head Start, talked about when children leave Head Start or GSRP. We actually don't know how many of those end up into these childcare program under subsidy. We're not able to aggregate the information, disaggregate, and to really look at where the outcomes coming for these children. And then last month, or at the last board meeting, I know there was a summary on the kindergarten entry assessment, which is moving forward here in Michigan, which will be another data point for us to be able to look at the effectiveness of these early childhood programs in relation to school readiness.
As we move towards comments and questions, can I just mention that you all know how great a job that Lindy Bush has done here for years, and we've just been fortunate to have her and that whole division. And the same way I gave Governor Granholm a shout-out when I thought, in her wisdom, she listened to our pitch to bring CTE back here, Career Tech, and listened to our pitch to have libraries, the State Library of Michigan assigned here. I definitely want to give Governor Snyder a shout-out because this was a close call, I think, for them. And I appreciate the fact that, I think you can see the logic of this as opposed to everything being moved to DHS or Community Health, for example. And it's really, I don't know if it's clear enough to local districts yet how this will help them with us extending our brackets in a more formal way. And then I just want to also say, we're very lucky to get just two outstanding directors that we inherit, you know, that, Lisa and Jeremy, you can just see in the short time they've been here, these are top-notch pros. I think in more examples like Lindy's been in the past to break the notion that, you know, state folks are made up of bureaucrats that some people have in their head. These are top-notch folks that are really doing good. And one last thing, you know, John mentioned the kind of the interplay I had with Governor Romney in the video earlier, and I thought it was good that both, obviously President Obama and also Governor Romney, if you see that whole clip, he said there could be some improvements to Head Start, but the focus of his answer was on Head Start. And I think that helps us understand that maybe we have come together with, you know, some of the issues that Jeremy brought up in the book, talks about the pros and cons. But towards understanding that there's a role here, and I think some of the statistics alone can help us understand that. No matter where we are, maybe philosophically, on whether or not families should have a more direct role, if 64% are depending on childcare, it's good that we have quality childcare, things like that. So it gets less, I think what's happening is it's getting less about the philosophy of where it should be and more about, with the givens, what do we want as quality? But the great team, and certainly Susan's just an excellent leader in this whole regard. So open this up to comments and questions from board members. Kathleen, please.
I'll start. Well, thank you very much for this. I just wanted to say that we've been pushing for early childhood education to get more of this chart showing the drop in the funding is really disneying, to say the least, and we have to turn that around. We talked about that last month with the recommendations on the School Aid Act, but for years, the state board has been pushing for more attention and more funding for early childhood education. And we had a task force, we had five task forces, and that was using a lot of, you might not know that. One was on early childhood, it was chaired by Sharon Wise, and we really pushed hard. It's good to see that it's all together now and here. I was not clear until you explained it more on the childcare aspect of it, the licensed and unlicensed. It sort of troubled me that people were unlicensed, and I guess that's just for a small number of children. Is that correct? They can only have up to four children? Is that what I read?
Yes, they are, they can only care for four children at one time. And again, if the child is going to the person's home, they have to be related. If they're not related, the person would be coming to the child's home. So not all of them are caring for up to four children.
Okay. Well, thank you, but I think it's really encouraging. And I, you know, when we started talking about the brain development, I went to lots of workshops and meetings and learned a lot about that. It just seems crazy that we don't take advantage of it. It's just, you know, I ran a conference on early childhood when I worked for the Senate Education Committee, that's probably 30 years ago already. And everything takes so long. And now with, the resources seem to be diminished instead of growing, so, but this is where we should put it. I remember we had a presentation from high school principals when we were doing our high school curriculum, and we talked, we asked one of them, we asked them, "What would you do to close the achievement gap?" And one of them came back right away, "Have better early childhood education." And I think he was right. So I think we really have to push this more and more and support what you're doing. So glad you're here.
One of the charts that I frequently put out and didn't today, but probably should have, is a chart that shows brain development, and that the brain development, the vast majority occurs in the first thousand days, and then it's a slow downhill slide. Well, the other side of the chart is our public investment, which is the smallest, and then it goes up. And somehow, the place where I used to work, Steelcase would say, "Well, that was a design flaw in how we've designed our services." And so hopefully, by talking about this more and understanding the potential for investing earlier, we'll be able to correct the design flaw in our system.
My kids would tell you that that slowdown is evident in their father on the brain development, so.
I was going to say.
You were going to say that, okay. John, please, and then Richard, please.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your work and hard work and leadership and pulling this together. Two questions. One, the kindergarten entry assessment, remind me what that is going to be? Is it a real ready-to-learn assessment that tracks this goal of making sure all children are developmentally ready to succeed when they enter school? Will it give us that, and will it be that kind of benchmark?
Vance, do you want to?
Vince, remind everyone who you are.
Vince Dean, Director of the Office of Standards and Assessment. Kindergarten entry assessment, we were provided some really quite limited funding to go through the process of kind of shopping around and looking at what type of a kindergarten entry assessment would meet those types of state needs that you're talking about. So Lindy and her team are doing a yeoman's task of really trying to revise and update, and what's talked about here is the early learning standards. And so as that process is maturing, right along behind that is, within those revised standards, what are we going to try to measure? What purposes are we going to try to use those for? So really looking at the different domains of when kids come into kindergarten, are they ready to learn and succeed in that? And, you know, kind of add some of those benchmarks to be successful as they enter kindergarten is our focal point there. That's, it's going to be a real challenge with the minimal funding we've been provided to build something that would be able to be administered statewide and give us a real good statewide snapshot that would support providing some data or information to inform the decisions and programming, resources discussions here.
Is it exclusively academic, or is it all the developmental domains?
It's more than the academic, so we will.
And do others have such a thing now?
There are a few states that do have something operational right now. There are a bunch of states right, pretty close to where we are, where they're committed to doing this, they have some resources there, there's a lot of energy around, things like the Common Core driving some of this discussion of how do we, career and college readiness, not just starting with when we measure it formally at third grade, but all the way down into kindergarten and things like that. So there's 10, 12 states.
The Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge, that funding spiked, obviously, the interest in kindergarten entry assessment. So there's a fair amount of what I call early development going on in the different states that received funding, as well as, like I stole the video, I didn't steal it, but for the first five of us used it, liberally used the video. We're hoping to take advantage of some of the developmental work that all of these other states are doing, based on their support by the Race to the Top Fund.
Second question, you mentioned a couple of the functional roles of the ECIC, the database, and 10 Great Start Centers. What is generally the relationship or roles of that organization with the Office of Great Start? Is it totally beautifully complementary? Is it duplicative? Where are we?
Well, it's a work in progress in that prior to the formation of the Office of Great Start, the Early Childhood Investment Corporation was the focal point in the state for early childhood development. Now, with the Office of Great Start being developed, and really the focus of the Office of Great Start is to really try to maximize the use of state and federal dollars, which is a very different role than the role Early Childhood Investment Corporation has played historically. The Early Childhood Investment Corporation's main task and a lot of the work that they were doing was developing what I call the infrastructure of the early childhood system within Michigan. They started the Great Start Collaboratives, the Parent Coalition, and started the Regional Resource Centers. So there are complementary functions, but obviously, we're working hand-in-hand in establishing working relationships in a new environment. But they're very different. The Office of Great Start is much more focused on the, what I call the service provision in early childhood, and the Early Childhood Investment Corporation has been primarily focused on the infrastructure development.
Thanks, John. Richard, Eileen, Mary Ann.
I haven't always acknowledged the work and commitment of you who present toward us, and want to acknowledge and appreciate that. At the same time, I do have some criticisms that may be different from the perspective of some of my colleagues on the board. The video that began was propaganda. It was a vision, for the most part, unsupported by research findings. There is a lot of exciting stuff going on about brain research and brain development, but its connection with specific activities in preschool has not been established by any studies anywhere. That needs to be clear. And the funding of these programs is based on faith and not by evidence. Now, we've gotten the impression that Head Start is a wonderful program. By the figures that you've provided us, we spend, oh, let's see, just about $6,000 per child, $6,300?
About $6,700 per child.
$6,700, okay, I rounded, so that explains that discrepancy. And yet, there was a 2010 Health and Human Services report that concluded that by first grade, the differences between the Head Start children and the others basically weren't there. I'm reading from the report. It's specifically speaking of the three-year-old cohort. As with the four-year-old cohort, there was no strong evidence of impacts on children's language, literacy, or math measures at the end of kindergarten or at the end of first grade. However, there was some suggested evidence of an impact on oral comprehension at the end of first grade. end of first grade. Its next point is no statistical significant impacts were found for teachers' reports of children's school performance in kindergarten and first grade, with the exception of a lower teacher assessment in kindergarten of Head Start children's math ability. And it acknowledges this is the one area where Head Start seems to have had a negative impact on the cohort. Now, despite this report, the president recommended an extra billion dollars in his budget for Head Start, and we all know that that was for political reasons. I am all for supporting demonstrably effective preschool programs, but we gotta be, we gotta look at facts. And a board like ours, where we serve for eight years on a term, we can afford to look at facts the way that folks of shorter terms cannot. And I, and I guess my own request of the Department of Education, and to you, Superintendent, would be to acknowledge some of the alternate studies or perspectives on some of these issues. Because I think in comparing some of them, we get a clearer feeling of what we're doing and I at least get the, I would then have a little more confidence that you're aware of some of the other facts that are out there, and I'd have more confidence in what the department is doing if, like, some of the caveats or, if we identify the, where we're operating on faith versus where we're operating on evidence.
I think you're gonna be surprised, but I agree with you. And that's part of what I call the hard work of the Office of Great Start. There are studies that convincingly prove that investing in early childhood is a great investment and that there's a return on investment. Usually, those studies, starting from the Highscope Study forty years ago to more recent studies, look at what I call quality programs with incredible rigor to the curriculum and the standards, as a condition of being able to assure that. Part of what was being talked about today is trying to make sure that we have more rigor and what I call more fidelity to the model in all of our early childhood programs. And you're, you're right, we are not there as a state, but that's part of, I hope, what you guys are gonna expect from the office and what we need to do. Which means at some point, and we are in the process of doing that, we're gonna be saying to some providers, you're not cutting it, we're not gonna be able to fund you if you are not providing the level of service at the quality that we know we need to be able to achieve the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. So I don't disagree with your assessment, but I hope, and I think you understand, that that's what this work is all about, and we are going to obviously not always have friends, because we're gonna have to have some very difficult conversations about quality and fidelity to model. And that is not what I'd say the state of the art across all early childhood programs in Michigan.
And may I just conclude, so, the solution, and we get the impression that the solution is more money. And I am not convinced that the solution is more money. I think the solution is better ideas, better research, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess, and I like to look at the cost per pupil, you know? If we're, if we're spending $6,700 per pupil for a Head Start program, we could lift a lot of families out of poverty just by giving them a check. Can we, can we produce an effective childcare program for $6,700 a child? I guess I would think so. If not, I guess I'd like to see an analysis or justification for the more money.
I think what we'll do, 'cause I think you have a legitimate issue in terms of the way we present here, 'cause we've, Susan just captured it, but we've, we've had this very discussion at our soup group meetings at least a few times, and I know that, but I think that's a fair criticism, that if we're not kind of demonstrating this in a way that we, that Susan just did, that we'll be more thoughtful about that. In this particular case, part of this was almost a primer to describe programs that are in place, that are federally funded, that, you know, that are, that have been moved over here. But I think even with that, we can do more of what Susan just described up front and try to, when she says we're not gonna have some friends, we're well aware of that, because this is gonna be based on results ultimately. And there'll even be folks that I think, because of that, are gonna be under a stress from their perspective, that almost makes it sound like in a given area, we might be against early childhood, in spite of everything you just heard today, because we think a particular segment of that is not getting the results that we're calling for. So we're, hear you though, and we'll, we'll work at that.
The other thing I'd like to say, because of the orientation and starting the Office of Great Start at this point in time, there's two pieces to it. We have to more efficiently use our resources to produce better outcomes. So I think that's part of the job, is looking at how to deploy the resources in a better way to achieve the outcomes. But at the end of the day, my gut tells me, whichever way, however we squeeze this and however well we do, we're gonna still end up having to need additional resources to really raise the level of work for early childhood.
And I would say, if I may, that I'm very impressed with a lot of the local districts who, in their own way, and it's not all the same, see the value of changing the way they use their investments. And in that sense, we've kind of been pushing that resource issues are about redistributing existing resources also. So, but that's a local control issue, and I'm very appreciative of board members and superintendents who've said, you know, statewide, we're spending a billion dollars a grade, we're basically not spending anything, especially for the large number of kids in early childhood, outside of what you saw today. And as a result, they're, they're pinpointing and focusing on what they wanna do as a local district to get kids from their perspective kindergarten-ready.
Well, and may I speak to that point? When you talk about money spent on kids early in the process, that, that's economic sleight of hand. A child whose, whose mother raises him full-time and gives up the possibility of a $30,000, $40,000 a year job is actually, in economic terms, spending more on that child than the woman who goes to, takes that $40,000 a year job and sends her kids to daycare, Head Start, and gets the federal funds. So when we talk about expenditure on young children, we, again, we need to be honest in our use of economic terms, because the mother who devotes her time to raising her children.
Or father.
Is spending much more than, than the government money that, that we put towards these early childhood programs.
Thank you. I think it was Eileen, and then Mary Ann, and then Dan.
I just wanna comment to Richard that the family of $22,400, $22,400, it's not the choice between $40,000 and your job, and it's more the lower income, the lower cost. I, I have some questions that I'd love to see, just a quick follow-up report, just a, you know, a summary of information to us, because we don't always see the same numbers that you might send other legislature. And the, and I also have a question too. But the kinds of things that I'd be interested in finding out without having to do it here would be whether, I see that with the strong new requirements, you have a drop in the number of unlicensed providers, and I was curious as to whether the licensed and consultant number that you have is also part of that equation, and whether you have enough of them as you move forward. There's clearly an unmet need. What I remember about the outcome evaluation that was presented was that there were better Head Start, long-term outcomes for, slightly better, for fathers who had had more education, and, and the parental commitment to the program. It appeared that there was a better return, if you will, in terms of success. And I, it also appeared that there, I'm not sure about this, that there might have been a better, a long-term outcome for children where, in the programs where parental advocacy is taught. Is that true?
It is.
Okay. So then going back to unmet need, one of the things I'd like to just have a number for is, as you get applications that you can't fill, and I'm presuming there is a substantial number of people that you're not even service at this point, do you have any sense in how many of them are really fighting to get into this program versus, you know, so that what they could, they would be open to being top parental advocacy? Or that they are really anxious to have that happen as opposed to just being fitted? And I don't know how you, I, I don't need that right now, but I'm just saying that that's a, that's a real issue, because when you talk about societal investment, you're either institutionalizing poverty and low outcome by taking away responsibility from parents, or you're creating a new environment. And I, I think of this because I had a cousin who was very high up in the Catholic Church and talked about the church's commitment to, to the great society effort, and how, how stunned over time they were to realize that they had institutionalized poverty in that program by accident, that they had created something that people didn't see they could get out of, but instead felt comfortable with, and had lower expectations, or weren't able to move forward. My response is you do what you can. You know, you, you jump in when you see better results and you have to do something, which is where we are. So the last thing that, and I'd also like to plug getting CEPI data for these children, because this is huge. There's no way to really follow them or to understand what, what we've done that was good or not so good, unless we have it, and I, that needs to be a commitment from state government in some way. And the last thing that I wanna bring up, I wanna try and tie Lindy into this, because when I was on the board earlier, I remember Lindy and I having a conversation about disassociated behavior, about kids who are getting kicked out of early, early preschool programs, early programs. And I've been talking to childcare providers who are unsettled by the number of children who are not responding to the program. I'm anxious, and it's going to sound like the wrong thing at a board meeting, state board event meeting, but I'm anxious to, to hear that the current requirements recognize the need for childhood behavior development in play and age-appropriate behaviors as opposed to education pushing kindergarten readiness, because little kids are, they're still little kids, you know, they may be pre-students, but they still have huge developmental needs that we could push aside in this process in our haste to get them ready for kindergarten. And that's a different conversation, I don't know if they're prepared to address it today, but that's a big one.
Thank you. Good points, and we will follow up. Thanks, Eileen. Mary Ann, and then Dan.
I'd like to add my thanks to everyone else for such an extensive report, as well as making us aware of how much is available here. I'm, I'm especially pleased to hear about the monitoring and inspections that you're conducting. And I was wondering, how often are you able to do that? How often can you get out to see these licensed centers?
So that is something that the Bureau of Children and Adult Licensing does, is to go out and do those monitoring visits. Before a home program is able to start their operation, there is a visit, and then the department, through their requirements, does, and they don't call them surprise, so I was kind of struggling for a word there, but they do go out and do follow-up inspections, and that is on 10% of those types of programs annually, that they do go out and do follow-up visits. Centers have more frequent licensing, inspection, visits. I believe those are every two years. So every two years, they are going out and physically doing a monitoring visit at a center location.
So in addition to just visiting, is there an evaluation process? Is there something in particular they look for?
They, they have a variety of things that they look for. They look at child records to ensure that all of the information that the programs are keeping on the children are accurate and up to date. They look at staffing qualifications and training to make sure that they're meeting those requirements. They do a physical inspection of the inside of the building. They look at furnace, fire inspection reports, as well as their outdoor space. At this time, they don't necessarily spend a significant amount of time in the classrooms observing the teachers. That's more of something that's being built into the Quality Rating Improvement System, Great Start to Quality, so that those two pieces of information can be put together to assess the quality of the programs.
Oh, that's great. And something I may have missed in your presentation, but is there a component that reaches out to children of families where English is not their first language?
So for, for Head Start, there is, one of the, the updates to their outcome framework is focused on English language learners. And so part of our updates, the early childhood standard of quality here in Michigan, will to be in alignment with that. There is a, a strong focus in Head Start for being culturally and linguistically respective of families which are in their service area. So knowing the population, a variety of populations that we have here in Michigan, each grantee is responsible to meet the needs of those families. In particular, with the migrant population that we have in Michigan, we also have a migrant Head Start program that focuses on providing Head Start services to migrant children throughout the summer here in Michigan. So both through our regional Head Start program, as well as the migrant, which is considered a different region, how that works is from the federal office, but through both of those programs, there is a focus on English language learners.
Would, would that include immigrant families as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Dan, please. Then Cassandra, then Greg.
Good morning. I, so I wanna add my thanks for the presentation today. I'm reminded, this is, reminds, so I would love to talk about this all day, frankly. My grandfather, who has passed away a number of years ago, who was one of my heroes, talked about a debate he had at some point in time in his life, where after the opposition got up and talked, he stood up and in his introductory lines, it's something like, like the modern day bikini, my opponent has, has touched the subject but has not covered it. And I feel like that's, that's where we find ourselves in this conversation. I wanna thank you.
You're getting all distracted, Dan. A reminder, wandering.
That's my grandfather. Of course, this was, you know, I don't know, sixty, seventy years ago, right? So, so interestingly, I had a, a very different reaction than, than my colleague, Dr. Zali, to your presentation. I thought it was really remarkably balanced and appreciated, your holding up the Head Start debates as a, kind of a example of the really raging debate that exists about the, the relative merits of, of Head Start and early care systems and early learning and development programs generally. So, so I thought it was great. I do want to, in the spirit of kind of revisiting that subject, mention a couple of things. So there are definitely challenges with, so I would hope that our decisions here would be made on the basis of data, to Dr. Zali's point. I do wanna point out that those decisions can only be as good as the data is. And one of the challenges that we have with existing assessments of early care programs is that we don't have great studies, frankly. We only recently have started to get longitudinal studies that actually would lay out long, long-term benefits or, or lack thereof of these programs. We don't, we've not had the kind of system alignment that's allowed us to, to, so these have traditionally been half-day programs, and the kids have gone into these other programs, and we've not had the kind of system alignment that's allowed us and we've not had the kind of system alignment that's allowed us to track kids from these federally funded programs to private programs and other care settings. We've not done a good job, up until recently, of disaggregating the data, frankly. And so as we look at these studies now, it's becoming rather apparent that these programs are remarkably effective for some subgroups, and perhaps not as effective for other subgroups. And we've yet to actually make decisions about how to market, or promote, or even where to place these programs in order to achieve the greatest benefit from them. And I have to, I have to address the propaganda piece as well. There's certainly no shortage of propaganda from those who are opposed to these programs. And so I think any discussion of propaganda in this, with regard to this subject, would have to be a little more balanced than one that we're able to have here today. The truth is that these programs have gotten bipartisan support for years. Republicans and Democrats have been supportive of them. We obviously have a Republican governor at the moment in the state who recognizes the value of these programs, the long-term financial benefit of these programs, the dividend as really developed by the Maxim and Marjorie S. Fisher Foundation more fully, so I direct folks there who wanted more information about it. These programs are wildly efficient and cost-effective for the state. More specifically, I really wanted to, on this short-term, long-term thing, and then I do have a question at the end of all of this, I promise. So as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, so most, I shouldn't say most, many, I don't know, I haven't, don't know the breadth of all of these studies and what percentage fall into which camp, but certainly many studies do find that there is some bump up in kindergarten readiness for kids who are coming out of these programs, like Head Start or Great Start readiness programs. And then there is some fade-out, short-term fade-out, whether that's first grade or third grade or what have you, but a lot of the benefits don't show up when you're measuring particular or specific cognitive skills or what have you, or IQ, for example. I wonder, though, if the blame, so one of the things that we don't have the answer to is I wonder if the blame for that should be placed on the early childhood or early care systems, and whether those are in fact not effective, or if the K-12 system, in fact, is the system that has not been effective. And so before we jump to the conclusion that we shouldn't fund early care systems, I think that's a discussion worth having, one. On the long-term stuff, so it seems like there are a lot of studies now which do suggest that there are significant long-term benefits from this stuff. Both, so just as a quick example, so Lindy and Dr. Schwanhardt presented just a few months ago on this Great Start readiness program, and our first real long-term study, which demonstrated that there were long-term graduation benefits, as I recall, particularly for African-American boys who participated in this program. And now we're seeing long-term studies that have come out with regard to Head Start, which demonstrate same kind of grade repetition benefits. So you see much less grade repetition, much higher graduation rates, much higher graduation equivalence, degree attainment, and wonderful results in terms of crime prevention and rate dropage. And once again, the disaggregated data, I think, is really important to look at. So to your point, it seems like the quality of care is really where all of this is driving, and where you have high-quality care, you get these great results. And where you don't have high-quality care, the results are either not as good, don't last as long, or perhaps don't exist at all. And it sounded to me as though your emphasis right now is around improving quality, not improving access or slots necessarily, although obviously there's always some interest in doing that. All of that, and so the TQRIS is an example of that and so on, I guess all of that leads me to this conclusion. I wonder why we would talk about eliminating early care programs, why that would even be a part of the conversation. When in K-12 programs, we look at, when we look at our public education system, we don't talk about eliminating public education, we talk about improving public education, where we see results that aren't satisfactory. It seems to me that in the early childhood system, early care systems, we'd want to take the same approach. Why would we eliminate it, particularly where we do have these studies now that suggest that there are these tremendous long-term benefits as opposed to improving it? It just, it doesn't seem to me to be a reasonable reaction to the data that we're looking at. Specific questions? Skipping ahead. With regard to the TQRIS data, as I understand, in December, we're supposed to see the release of that for the first time, the Star data. Is the audience for that, parents or providers of these early learning and development programs? Or if it's both, kind of, what's the balance between those? And maybe another way of framing that is, how much is this system designed to be an accountability system that is in some respects punitive, perhaps, versus a quality improvement system that's really supportive, and perhaps that helps parents with the exercise of choosing where to send their children? And my apologies for the length of my remarks, just had a lot to say.
So I'll go first, and if anybody wants to add, feel free. I think it's really for both, parents and providers. So for parents, it's about educating them about the importance and the value of the quality of the early learning setting where their child is, what to look for when they're choosing a setting, so really helping give them the information and tools that they need as they're making choices for their children. For the providers, it is about providing them support to continue to improve and increase the quality of their program.
Maybe a quick follow-up? Just one. Given that that's the case, so it seems like providers would, obviously there's some level of opting in and self-assessment that's a part of the system, as I understand it, and we've got the regional resource centers and so on, so they'll get some support and feedback and so on. What's the plan around how to disseminate this so that parents actually see it? Like, how do we help them get their hands on it so that they're able to make better informed choices?
I think there will be multi-approaches to helping parents have access to this information. One of them will be through the Connect database that I mentioned earlier. So the STAR information will be located there, as well as some descriptors of what characteristics the provider met to reach that STAR level. There will be a website that's developed to help share this information and make it available to parents, and there are other supporting documents that are being put together to help parents understand this as well. I don't know if anybody has anything else to add, but I think that's a primary.
Dan, you know that, as Jeremy's getting ready, that one of the challenges, and we have discussions probably every other week at Suits Group, is how we get to this push-out strategy as opposed to hoping they find it somewhere. And it's a tough one, where we can use advice and counsel on how to do more of that.
It's the very first step for teaching parents advocacy. And I think of the study that was done, about 30% of the parents, wasn't that the number, Dan, 30% of parents would not succeed in childhood, even if that school were less effective than others, it would be pretty to choose. So when you talk about the components that helped make children successful in the study, it seems to me that's the very basic one, and I would really wish that, I would say, Marty, Marty, what can we do?
Well, you know, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems to me that Head Start is aimed at for low-income families, very low-income families, and many of them probably don't have good education, so they wouldn't be quite as low-income, probably. So how do we get to them? They may not have computers at home, the way everybody else might. Can they get to a library? Do they have transportation to go anyplace, get access to this stuff? Everything's on computers now. How do you talk to people who don't have computers? You still have to talk to them, not in person.
There's nothing like knocking on folks' doors, right? So it occurs to me that, and this is a conversation for another time in place, probably, but this has come up a couple of times around assessing K-12 schools and dissemination of that information, as well as this TQRIS, that given the kind of increasing number of options available to parents around education, whether from cradle to career, one of the things that, that the Michigan Department of Education will have to figure out is how to better partner with community-based organizations to help get the information produced by the department in the hands of families who really are part of the audience for it, and a significant part of the audience for it. It's maybe just a larger conversation to be had at another time, but it would be a tremendously valuable one, it seems to me, for us to have. This stuff, it doesn't do any good if it's produced and never hits the hands of folks who would benefit from it.
Interestingly, one of the things I thought that came out in one of the counties in southeast Michigan, that at first I was alarmed about, that we talked about at our last meeting on focus schools and some of the misunderstanding, and the fact that we have some high-achieving schools, but 30% of their kids don't have, there's not one kid proficient in math. I thought it was interesting that, in terms of getting information out, actually that was a good thing there was controversy about it, because I think there's people in those high schools that had no idea until their superintendent and intermediate superintendent and others kept going on and on about it. And in fairness, I think there was some misunderstanding, but, so I'm wondering out loud about whether, you know, you create controversy, and maybe that's a good thing, so that people, it gets more coverage and a greater understanding from the media. In that case, it's really helped, I know individually, it's helped parents in that region who, if it had just gone out, "It's our report that's available on the web," those high school parents would have had no idea. But they have an idea because of the controversy that was created by an intermediate superintendent and some of her pursuits. So we just have to work at that. Please, Cassandra.
Thank you. Well, I also wanted to add my thanks to you for pulling this together, and it's an education, and specifically your comments about ECIC, because I've always been a little confused about where one ends and the other begins, and how the two work together. So I appreciate that. My question is, we all know, a couple weeks ago, Bridge Magazine and some of the media came out with a study that said 30,000 children who are eligible for these services are not getting them. And so I was hoping maybe you could just comment on why you think that 30,000 students, is it, you know, that, to Richard's point, that parents are self-selecting not to attend because maybe they have a stay-at-home parent, or is it social factors like transportation? Or is it simply something that's infused in the requirements that might be creating, maybe making it a little cost prohibitive? And the reason I say that, and I'm not advocating for this at all, but I have heard from schools that say, you know, for example, the requirement to have a certified teacher means it's more expensive, and ergo, you have less spots for kids. So what are your thoughts on that?
One of the things that's apparent, even if we tweak all of those pieces, is that there are over 29,000 kids who are eligible but not served. And at the end of the day, the reality is, if you add up all the Head Start money, you add up the GSRP money, you add up the early childhood, special ed money, we don't have enough resources to serve the additional 29,000 who are eligible but unserved. So that's, that's the reality of the situation.
Do we have a sense on what resources, the amount of resources we would need in order to satisfy that 29,000, and is that something that we, as the state board, can communicate with the legislature?
Well, there's, depending on how much you want to tweak some of these services, determines how much money you would end up having to need for this.
You know, the governor, as I mentioned at a meeting or two ago, invited us to at least give some thoughts on the, on this very issue with the state aid, and it'll get debated, and I think, to your point, there's a very important role for the board, through legislative committee, and then here, to either support or not, the funding. But we've initially requested the $130 million, I shouldn't even say we requested it, because it wouldn't be ours. We've indicated, based on discussions here, that, not just to increase the available enrollments, because in some cases, whether there's an opportunity for a parent or not, they won't make that choice. So we call it enhance and, help me with.
Expansion, enhancement and expansion.
And expansion. And so that, you know, that was, the state aid bill will be something that others will weigh in on, but we were asked about that and weighed in. And it is one, I mean, I know there's disagreement at the table here, but, and, you know, and I'm, I think it's healthy to have the debate here, and be provocative, and think about where we really need data and results. I think this is all healthy. I'm convinced, and as an individual, and was asked as an individual, so I certainly think it would be appropriate for the board to also weigh in. And I think in my case, the $130 million would be an appropriate investment. It shouldn't be out of the existing K-12, it should be in addition to that. And I think, we'll see. I mean, the governor, you know, I don't want to speak for him, I know he's, I think they have to look at the whole package that comes in on requests and decide what they're going to support, but I'd be surprised if he doesn't see the wisdom in at least some of that investment being made. And, but yeah, Cassandra, I think it would be great as the board to debate it, you know? I mean, I'm not sure there would be 100% concurrence with that. But to me, those results have improved for GSRP. I do think there are areas where, as Susan said, really to Richard's question, that we haven't, we're not clear on results, and we just kind of go on and on about it, and we're going to get better at it. I think it was Greg, and then Kathleen, we'll go back to that.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate it. And I think you're right, I think it is an issue that will be debated, I think, over the next few months, but, and it's been a great discussion. One of the things that I think I want to make sure that doesn't go unnoticed here before it is that restructuring government is always a difficult task, especially when there's multiple departments involved and multiple federal funds. And I think here, we're getting the, you know, polished final product, and I just want to make sure that the board knows how much work has gone into getting the office a great start up and running, you know, as detailed in an executive order by Governor Snyder that was dropped off here at MDE. And I know a lot of man-hours went into, you know, the behind-the-scenes work, and I just want to make sure that everyone here, you know, is at least aware of that, and it's never quite as simple as it might seem. So thanks, Mike. Thank you, Greg. Kathleen, please.
Glad you said that, Greg, because I think most of us know that it's not simple. I think sometimes the general public doesn't appreciate how much work goes into everything, but it is remarkable how much you've got organized already, so I think it's good to highlight that. But I wanted to highlight to Richard that I, there are so many studies, there are a lot of studies, some, as you say, critical, and many are supportive. One that I think that was, in addition to the high scope, and as you say, those are high quali, very high-quality programs, and the GSRP that we presented on, a couple of years ago, I heard a presentation by the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis, which you wouldn't think would do a study on early childhood education, but it did, and it was a very highly-regarded, very well-done study. And it was, it showed the value of the investment is tremendous. And as a result of that study, they had all kinds of support from the business community in Minneapolis and Minnesota to support early childhood education, and they were going around, the business people were going around trying to convince other business people to support it, too. So I thought that was a very convincing one to me, and I thought you might be interested in.
John, please.
Real quick, I just want to reinforce the sentiments that Dan, and Susan, and Mike, and others have expressed. I think, one, I was also pleased that you were sharing the diversity of research results on particular programs, and also on the different characters of programs, high-quality, low-quality, get different results. You know, I sort of knew this, weighted, and folks like Tim Bartik and others, that the quality program showed this incredible long-term dividend for society and better like outcomes for the young people. I also think, you know, Susan, your articulation was right on in so many of the things we need to do in education. We need to reform it, improve quality, and then we need to be willing to invest enough so that all young people can participate in a quality program. So we have to do, from my perspective, both things simultaneously. Reform what we do, it's hard, so that we're delivering a better education, better teacher quality, better outcomes, but then we need to be willing to invest so that we can support all young people to realize those outcomes, which does require more resources in a reform system.
Richard, please.
I have read a couple of the studies on the benefits of
I have read a couple of the studies on the benefits of early childhood education, and they all assume that early childhood education will be effective, which is precisely what the Health and Human Services study of Head Start failed to prove. And the real, the real challenge, then, is how do we define high-quality? And I strongly suspect that we could become prisoners of our concepts. High-quality is not necessarily one-dimensional. Program may be high-quality for one kind of student, but not for another kind of student. And when we begin making, you know, a high-quality program has this much attention to math, and this much attention to phys ed, and this much attention to music, you know, not many Olympic stars come from well-balanced homes. I mean, to be an Olympian, you have to, you know, put six, eight hours into your, into your skill. Same thing with music, same thing with other kinds of excellences. So what would seem to be a low-quality education setting for students at large may be the ideal for students who are pursuing a particular kind of talent or such, or the same way that may have particular needs that other students don't. And my, my thought is not to, not to do nothing, but to be flexible in our, in our concepts, and, as I say, identify what, what is effective. And two more thoughts here. In terms of institutionally, you know, there's the concept of mission creep, where the mission department of education was once concerned with one through eight, and over the, over the century, and it developed into twelve, and then reached back into kindergarten, and now we're creeping into preschool, and there's no reason why we shouldn't be concerned with the home conditions, because you do a criminal background check on childcare workers, but we don't do a criminal background check on people before they have children. And there's no, there's no question as to which is more influential in the, in the life of the child. So we need to be clear in our own minds as to the difference between mission creep and just an evolving mission, which we regard as legitimate. And the other, and the other thought escapes me, so we'll just.
No worries. Maybe what we'll do is, over lunch, I'm going to get two podiums, we're going to adjust for height, and we're going to get some makeup, and we're going to go out. No, this is, this is interesting, and Dan, I saw your hand go up right away, so.
It did go up. Perhaps we should get two podiums. Two things, so the, so I would just take issue with the characterization that the studies all assume the effectiveness of early childhood education. The studies make the case that when those, when that education is effective, these are the, so the Maxim and Marjorie S. Fisher Foundation study, for example, suggests that when this education is effective, these are the results financially that we can expect to see as a state. That's far different from assuming, or the purpose of the study was not to evaluate what is effective and what is not. Other, other studies, though, that do benefit, that do track these long-term longitudinal benefits, don't assume the effectiveness of, quite the contrary. Part of the purpose of those studies is to figure out which ones were effective and which ones weren't, which is why they come up with these long-term, is how they've, they've been able to measure the long-term benefits of the program versus others. I just, this is, it's a fascinating subject for the Department of Education, not the Department of Schools. And I hope that we will continue to, to visit the subject, given the tremendous benefit, at least that I think, this particular board member thinks, exists in these investments. So thanks again.
Great. Thank you all. Thanks, guys. Good job. And how about the rest of our team standing up? I noticed some of you speaking of mission creep. You creeped in here, in the best sense. Thank you for your work on, in our department. We.